We'll call this work session to order, please. Charles, will we get started? Then I'll ask you to view the indication, please, sir.
Absolutely. Let us bow for a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we so thank the Lord God of all the blessings you have bestowed upon us, God, and Lord, with mind, Lord, of our brothers and sisters, Lord, down on the Gulf Coast, Lord God, who are going through trying times right now, Lord God, and we ask that you be with them, Lord, and be for them what they need you to be, God. Protect them from hurt, harm, and danger, oh God, and restore them, Lord God, back to that place you would have them to be. Continue to bless our community here in Besford, Measor, Lord. Bless this council, God, and our staff, and all the citizens, Lord God, that we represent, God, and give us the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, God, to make the best decisions that is in their best interest. Coming to our midst now, bless us as only you can bless. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the great world with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have to approve the agenda, please?
Mm-hmm.
All right, you proceed. The agenda, um, the motion token.
At the move.
Rachel, just here, second.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. District section, District 1.
District 1.
District 3.
Yes.
District 4.
District 4, yes.
District 7.
Yes.
Okay, strategic plan. Um, Rick and Klaus, you're on deck, please, sir.
Hey. Good evening. Thank you all for having me again. I'm happy to be here. Basically, tonight, we're just gonna go through some of the revisions that we made after the last work session. We've incorporated some of those comments, and I'm just gonna really briefly walk you through some of those changes. You'll notice that the draft for the first part of the document is pretty much the same, so I'm not, I won't go through all of the other elements, like talking about what the strategic plan is and the process that we went through, because I think you all are very familiar with that at this point. What we did change was some of the discussion at the last meeting revolved around our strategic theme graphic and trying to clarify some of the language about what that really means. And so, we've added some stuff here, one was just clarifying that these themes, this graphically illustrates the interrelated focus areas that we were working on, and really, all of the goals and objectives in this plan fit in with those three areas. And so, the way that this thing is really designed is that our goal is to improve on each of those areas, the community, economy, and government. And so, every one of these, if you make it, if one of them addressed something that may be more community-focused, the idea is that it has an impact on community, and it has a positive impact on government. But one of the things that we added was that, to stress that the real focus here is this, is what we're calling our annual action plan, and this really solidifies this framework so that every year is a part of the budget cycle. We're gonna decide, staff will decide what goals and objectives will be targeted for that year, in order to maximize resources and ensure accountability. So, we added that language in there about the annual action plan, which goes along with monitoring maintenance. So, this is really, again, is just reiterating that once a year, when it, when budget cycle comes around, and you all have your council retreat, we look at what was accomplished over the previous year, and we use that time to try to decide what are the priorities gonna be for the, for the next fiscal year, any of the budget accordingly. Kind of clarified some of the, I think we added a couple elements along the themes and gold sides, but the overall narrative for each of those strategic themes stayed the same. The most important thing, we talked a lot last time about how we really wanted to make sure that we needed to have short, medium, and long-term timeframes associated with the goals and objectives. And so, you'll see, this is structured like the way we presented it last time, but each one of these objectives has in parentheses where it fits into those timeframes, which we basically defined on the, on the previous page down here on your timeline. Short-term objective is basically ongoing, something that's happening immediately within, or within the first year. Mid-range is within a two-to-three-year timeframe, and long-range within a three-to-five-year timeframe. So, and we're really, we think about this plan as a five-year plan, but it's being updated every year. So, it's kind of a living document. So, what we did, adding, adding all of that stuff, we created a couple pages at the end summarizing the goals and organizing them based on the, whether they're short-term, midterm, or long-term. And so, I won't go through each one of these. I think you all have, have had a, had it to kind of look through, and we wanted to get your feedback at this point. This was, this was a staff's, uh, you know, after we talked it through, this is kind of the way we thought things fit, fit in, in terms of, you know, what are, what our goals, what we know the goals are at the staff level, and the objectives that we are already working on and want to achieve within that first year, midterm, and long-term timeframe. But we wanted to get your input. And just a couple things I wanted to highlight about the way these timeframes are generally organized. In some instances, they are, are carryovers. So, like comprehensive plan, for instance, the very first short-term goal, you know, we've laid all of this out in the strategic plan in a way that a lot of this information can be directly integrated into the comprehensive plan, so that when you get to midterm, and you're looking two to three years out, and when the comprehensive plan is updated, that translates really nicely into updating the zoning ordinance to reflect those changes in a comprehensive plan. Now, there's some other ones that you'll notice are designed to have that same logical flow over time. We've been working on, you know, with the water and sewer system upgrades, developing a comprehensive plan to address the critical needs for a water and sewer system. That flows into a midterm goal of developing a capital improvement plan. So, after, you know, we, we really do the assessment of what the needs are, that can feed into a longer-term or midterm goal of incorporating that into a true CIP. So, with that, we really wanted to get your feedback at this point, and see if there is anything that, if you have any input on the way that we categorize these, if there's any additional changes, or anything that we need to make at this point.
Right. One thing that, um, was kind of a disconnect for me was, uh, in the H-Tags, which we're gonna be talking about a little later, maybe, there's a big focus on arts. And I don't see a priority focus on arts in our strategic plan. And I think that under economic development, uh, that's usually a soul core account development. When you're talking about corporations, if you're really talking about developing that industrial park or future development, a lot of CEOs, like, see what the community's known arts by, spouses, you know, children. They want things for their family to be able to do, be involved in.
I think we did, and that's a midterm, I think, under the community activities, one of the objectives is leveraging resources to enhance cultural art activities and events. Is that, that was, that's a very good point, and that's something that came up a lot in our, in the work sessions, as well as the public meetings. And so, we did, we did, we do think that's a priority that needs to be incorporated in here. But I agree also that that's something, from an economic development perspective, that we're really starting to realize how important it is. So, I think the, the arts focus can be folded into both that community piece, as well as in the economic development piece.
The other thing, um, we just came back from Hillhead. Ted, did you go to the coffee? Did you go to the coffee? It's way out the PDA.
Barbara Towne?
Yeah, you been there?
Yeah. So, I had to go and go to rest.
Hillhead is doing a lot of, it's almost like amenities for prospective growth and families. That community is this, I mean, we can't compete with it, but there's a lot of things for people to do between bike riding, shopping, helping fitness, even medical help, upkeep, and whatnot. And all those things, I think, are very attractive, makes the town, the community, very attractive. So, how we package all that, you know, in our goal, I see that this bullet list is there, but we have to be, have a way of selling the community, to let people know that we have those type of things. I think that it's all there, but how we gel it together is something that would be very interesting, how we package.
Creating the package.
Yeah.
Because we are, right now, going to be doing the bike and pedestrian plan through the grant that Gregory's got in force. So, that study will be on his way. Then we talk about, you know, whatever the future of H-Tags is, if we move to cultural arts type of things, and I get what you're saying, how do we bring this into one plan that encompasses all of it?
Start moving more sexy, so there's, you know, people.
You're talking about for marketing purposes?
For marketing purposes, so people will know. First of all, we have to add, but then, once we get it, we have to be able to, to sell it.
Yeah, it's one of the things that we, we have this in here as midterm under economic development. But again, like I was saying, I think some of your short-term things are figuring out, you know, what are the assets that we have already, and what do we need? And then, we move into that, we talked a lot in some of the, in some of the focus groups about the need to kind of bring all of the players together in the town that are working on retail recruitment, and business recruitment, and marketing, and branding, and develop kind of a comprehensive package that, that ties into all of the things that we, we know are important to the community, that we think would be important to people who want to visit here. Like, really coordinating that marketing activity, I think, is something that's really important.
Yeah, I think, because what is this plan in downtown is just, it's, it's gonna be, if we can pull it off, it would be, you know, something that's gonna drive the town.
Yeah.
Also, he told you all. I thought he was condescending.
I'm sure he walked out the door.
Right. The, uh, short-term, midterm, and long-term goals, was this an effort to sort of prioritize the, the projects?
Yeah, we, so the last, last discussion we had is typically, these strategic plans will have some, some sort of timeframes associated with things, to help figure out staff know what, what the priorities are, and which, you know, and how to work that into the work program. And so, that's what the, the timeframes are really there to say, it, within what we know, what our immediate needs are, these are the things that we want to work on first. And as I mentioned, a lot of times, those first steps lead into next steps. And so, it's a lot of the midterm and longer-term ones are things that come after some of those first, those first activities.
Right. And the, that something, say, you have this, um, say, long-term and midterm goal, and due to some unexpected contingencies, that has to be moved up to the short-term priority. How would that affect the overall scheme of it?
And I may, what we were, what we were trying to avoid was ranking every objective, going through whatever, in a priority ranking, because this, that would just be a nightmare to, because there's so many moving elements.
Right.
On a day-to-day, weekly, monthly, annual basis, that trying to rank each one of those in a priority order. So, what we said is, let's look at a short-term, midterm, long-term, and put within those categories. In the case that you're, you're talking about, let's say we have something that's a middle range, but some external influence comes in and says, makes this a priority now.
Right.
Well, if it's, if it, if we're not, if they can't wait till the next retreat for us to look at the upcoming annual action plan, certainly, we can come to council with that and say, hey, this is a midterm, here's what's happened, we need to look at working on this right now.
Then you have to figure out implementation.
Then we have to look at implementation. It, it, just because it's midterm on there, we don't have to necessarily change the strategic plan in that moment. But when the next retreat or annual, if it can wait until the next retreat, then when we start talking about the annual action plan for the next year, we can move it up at that point, and make it a part of that year's annual action plan.
And I think what you'll find, too, is when you, when you have those retreats, and you, you're reviewing what these, what we've, what's been accomplished over the previous year, you may find some things in midterm goals and long-term goals that, for whatever reason, you've actually accomplished or been working on. So, that's part of what the annual process is for, is to not just set your goals for the next year, but to review what you've accomplished that previous year.
Right. That would be the purpose of the, uh, the work session at retreat each year?
Yes, sir.
To see what we've got done, what we'll, once we work on that, feels better. So, there is some flexibility there, yeah?
Yes, sir.
With the, uh, return, so, be it in long-term, long-term.
Is there any other question? Is everybody fine with the way that we've set this up based on feedback from the last meeting?
I think you've done a good job. I think all of you have done very good job with this.
Then we will bring this back to the September regular meeting. Oh, can I? Chris, is this adopted by a resolution, or is this adopted by ordinance, or does?
I don't think it matters. I think it's whatever council's pleasure. You only tell them it's adopted by ordinance.
Right.
I think you do it by resolution. They, this is what our plan is.
Because if any change is needed, you can have one ready. If you need to change something by ordinance, you would have to have two agreements. Would everybody be fine if we brought this up?
No, if you never had with the attorney, Frank, so, if there's a recommendation, yes. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you all.
We appreciate all you've done. Should help us get to that point, because this is much further down the road than we've ever been before.
The document, very well put together. I'm very pleased. And this is, this is y'all's first strategic plan, isn't it?
For municipality, yeah.
For municipality.
We're, we're excited for the, the opportunity, and it really has been a pleasure working with all of you and, and with these two.
Ted, this is gonna be on the website. The updates, updates will be on the website. Is it planned on the website?
Once, once it's out, we'll put it on there. All right. But the next thing, are you ready to move?
Yes.
All right, next thing was a discussion of H-Tags. So, July 10th, um, ex-councilman Wizwati brought up to.
Former.
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 Former. Councilman Wizwati brought up to.
Ex-mayor.
He's been exed.
You say, right.
Don't text him the bill. Jim brought up tabling the hospitality tax until we could explore projects further, look at going ahead and doing a formation of a committee. With that said, I, I think we are looking at the potential of, we obviously have two special elections, and we have people not running it in. We're looking at turnip run council within the next three months. And, um, at this point, I really want to know the direction from council as we sit right now. Is this something we really just want to kind of put a hold to, and let the new council coming in begin the process back over and take off with it? Or is this something that you want to go ahead and look at forming a committee to get started looking at projects, and to, to have things ready so that when the new council comes in? Or do you want to vote next month?
Well, because I'm a proponent of it, I certainly feel like this group that has, has already dealt into the ins and outs of it, should, um, keep it perpetuated so that when the new council is seated, they've got some groundwork already laid, something to, to go through.
Right, you.
And therefore, I'm, I'm advocating that we still do the committee, um, to start coming up with list of projects that, uh, they might address, so that when it's ready to be considered for a vote, that there's some solid ideas for what projects could be utilized.
And I, I had Ted go ahead and put an executive session on for legal advice on the hospitality tag, because some discussions that were going on last time, there was some misconception. So, I know it's at the end, but if y'all are going to discuss it, it might be a good idea to help us skip to the executive session, so that y'all can ask me questions, and we can go right back out, and y'all can discuss it. Because there's several different ways of doing it. And I want y'all to see all different sides before you make a decision on which way you're gonna go forward. The only reason I do that is not paying attention to that special question.
The thing about it is that realistically, Charles is the only person that's going absolutely positively here, um, in a couple months. I mean, that's the reality of it.
That's true.
So, we should, we should not, I don't think that we should handcuff or, um, do anything to, I mean, that's, that's a lot of people that's gonna, but.
I agree, I agree, Steve. I don't want hamstringing that. Some decision that we've made, I think, this close to the election, now, where are we back, three or four months, and it continued to move forward, that'd be a different sort of, this close to the election, I'd prefer putting that in the hands of the new council. Now, I'm not gonna say I disagree with Rachel about beginning to do some of the legwork as far as the projects and project, um, recommendations, identification, um, up to that point.
But, you know, Ted, you've got a lot of that stuff in the can anyway. A lot of stuff that's already ready to go, it's been in the paper, but, um, it's not gonna be forever. There's only gonna be sixty days, and there's gonna be a whole new group of, of folks with probably a million different ideas for what to do, so.
I don't disagree in waiting till the new council's seated. I, I think that's a very good idea, actually. My question, and, and I guess, is, do we want to go ahead? And, and I'm not exactly sure about our council wants to discuss.
Well, I, I.
With regards to this, if that has any effect with regards to committee or anything, I'm not sure, so.
Well, we can hold on to that until we meet with Chris, if he wants us to go in the executive session, um, to finalize the discussion. I mean, we can amend the agenda now. We've got to go through the, through I and C, and then, and then come back to this.
Well, you know, if it's, if it's not the desire of, of the, the council to pursue doing any of the legwork, I think it's gonna be a question. If we're, then it just stays stable until the new council is, is set.
Yeah, and that doesn't stop Ted in the set, in the staff.
The staff doing that.
Doing the things they need to do.
But as far as our involvement, if.
It's just ongoing.
Yeah, then, then I don't seem to need to.
Would we want to go back there when that time comes, and then come back, if, and based on what he said, and make a, there's no vote tonight, but.
Well, to me, I don't even seem to need to.
Okay.
Make the session, if in fact, we're not gonna sue anything. If we're gonna just, we get a table.
That's why he's not gonna have to bring the ball in here.
That's right. If we're gonna, you know, we're not gonna, if it's from a committee and do anything, then.
Chris, are you agreeable?
Well, there are things that y'all can put in place now, that will not hamstring somebody down the road. There are things y'all can do right now that will aid the new council that comes in, and making the decisions whether they want to go through with it or not. And that's part of the reason why I wanted to talk to y'all, and give y'all the, there's several different ways of doing this.
Okay, well, let's, let's hear what he has to say.
Now, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna force one way or the other. I just want y'all to be fully informed about everything, because there's a lot of moving parts to putting one of these in place.
Obviously, Chris feels he has some legal issues that he almost prepared with us, so, let's see what he has to say. You're on.
Okay, the fun part of the evening, the employee handbook. You can hear you all rolling your eyes. So, okay. So, every year, we take a look at the employee manual, the employee policy and procedures manual, and we call it the employee handbook, to make sure, to see if there's any updates that are necessary with regards to legal changes, policy or process changes, anything that makes sense. And so, this year, we're bringing forth a handful of changes, and as you all received, you received a memo with a bullet point discussion on really what's changed. There's been some, some grammatical changes, a few little extra words here and there. I'm not really covering those tonight. I wanted to cover really kind of the bigger points that, and this has already been reviewed by Kevin Stern, our leader attorney. And so, we had that conversation with him on Friday, go through all of his changes and his recommendations, and they've been incorporated. And so, we'll go through those.
Yeah, if I could add one thing real quick.
No.
What we had sent to him was things specifically regarding service awards, Christmas bonus. While he was reviewing that, Kevin used that time to basically do another full review of our employee policy and procedures manual. I know, I still don't know if he had time available or what, but he decided, it's been about, I think we're in year three, you're supposed to have it reviewed every five years. But he decided to go ahead and do another full review, so, just want that.
No, no, and I appreciate that, yeah. Because I, there had been some, some changes with the Department of Labor with regards to overtime that didn't take effect, and that's why we thought it was prudent to go ahead and given, put it in his hands, um, in general. But we were really, we weren't expecting as many changes as he, he came about. Okay, so I'm gonna go through these. If you brought them with you, fantastic. If you didn't, no big deal. So, one of the very first things, evaluation period for new employees, we added the phrase, unless otherwise determined by the town manager. To the first sentence, to provide flexibility to the town manager, shorten probation period for new employees. So, we sometimes will rehire someone, maybe they'll leave for whatever reason, and come back to us. There may be a reason why we don't need to put them through a full six-month probation. Just gives the town manager that flexibility to, to shorten that probation period if necessary. And next bullet point there is employment status classification. This is really just reorganizing that page. Things were all mushed together. I kind of like it separated visually. So, that's just kind of a minor change, and the labor attorney was fine with that. He didn't have any issues with that at all. The next is, is something that we're bringing that's, that's relatively new. It's not, it's new to us, but not new to other municipalities. And it has to deal with annual leave for firefighters or our, our staff members who work a 24-hour schedule. So, right now, if an individual works a 24-hour schedule, they earn eight hours of annual leave a month. So, it would require that they earn three months of annual leave to take one day off. Whereas, a 40-hour employee, or even a 12-hour employee, would only have to earn one, or have one month of earned leave to take off one day, or one and a half. So, we're looking to make that a much more equitable transaction for our firefighters, so that way, if they want to take a day off, they don't have to save up three months' worth of leave in order to have the same privilege a 40-hour employee would. So, we're, we're just adding equitability there, and the way we did that was by increasing the amount of, of leave given to a firefighter or a 24-hour shift employee, which is only three in, in town right now. And it increases their allotment by just a few hours. But, in the, on the annual perspective, it gives them the same ability to take off the same number of days as a 40-hour employee and as a 12-hour or nice 84-hour a week by the employee. So, it's really just creating an equitable transaction for everyone. And it was a recommendation upon the fire department. They did a lot of homework and research on this. And Jay, did you want to add anything to it real quick?
Well, just as a point of clarity, firefighters work 24-hour shifts, and they average 10 shifts per month. So, it's not gonna be exactly the same number of days off, but it's a 50% increase. Just for your information, a 40-hour employee is getting 2,080 hours a year, and a firefighter working 24-hour shifts will get 2,920. So, they work more hours in the year. That's why I put 50%. So, they're more in line with the 12-hour employees, eight hours. So, they're not gonna get, they're not gonna get a shift per month. It's actually only one every two months. So, it improves it, it puts it in line with Columbia Fire Department, the city of Columbia's, and we'd also got Lexington County in Ermo. So.
This is ongoing.
It's a struggle every municipality.
A lot of municipalities and county governors have had this come up. I don't think everybody's addressed it at this point, but.
Yeah, we, we did, you know, compare it to some other municipalities in areas, so. Yeah, we, we did, you know, compare it to some other municipalities in areas.
Any questions, Tony? Thank you, Jay. Next is political activity. So we have language in there that was working for the most part, but it wasn't in alignment with what the, the municipal association of South Carolina model employee handbook language had. One of the things that we felt was missing was the ability for the town manager to ask someone to take a leave of absence if their position or running for a position conflicted with their duties. Whereas that language was not in our current policy. So we wanted to have that flexibility so that there was a situation that arises where someone's, you know, official town duties conflicted with them running for a particular office, that we could come together and figure out a, a, a solution that would take care of that potential problem.
My question would be, why would you do that? I mean, it, it needs to, in my mind, and the way the state operates, it's either or. If, if your job doesn't allow you to run for a political office, you either A decide you're not going to run or B decide you're not going to work later. So why would you grant a leave of absence? Because they're still considered employees of the town.
It's just during the political season, during the campaign season. And I'll just use this as an example. If somebody, an employee with the town decided that they wanted to run for.
Sheriff.
Sheriff. And.
You're talking about their campaign activities would interfere with their job?
Yeah, I wouldn't interfere.
Well, that's, that's forbidden on the state level. It can interfere with your job.
Right, short and simple.
So why would you want to grant leave of absence?
As of right now, if they wanted to run outside of catching them, if we felt like somebody was putting more effort while at work towards their political campaign, obviously we could have a chat with them. But rather than just having to go the whole route to terminate someone per se, or ask them to be removed from the race, we say, I tell you what.
You talking about Simmons?
No.
He was talking about anybody.
Anybody.
I'm trying to figure out. That's just, that's just something way out of the.
No, no, no. It's just as a part of our review and, and reviewing this, this is one of the things that we realized we had.
I'm going to be there.
But where did you come up with this idea? Is it something other municipalities are doing? Like I said, it's not accepted on the state level. If you're campaigning and it fears with your, your job, it is completely forbidden.
Well, it is, but it's also, it's one of those, all right, let's just use me for example. Say I want to run for Congress. I want to challenge Representative Wilson. Well, you know, it may, my ability to do that and my ability to do this may be compromised. And so having that available, that, that, that mechanism to have that conversation and say, hey, listen, you need to either, you know, do this or do that, choose one or the other, but without going that full route of saying you have to leave the position. You could, and we don't have to accept an individual's leave of absence either. So that gives us flexibility. But it may be somebody who's worth holding on to and, and waiting to see the results of it. But it, it really just bringing it more A in line with, with the municipal association's handbook standard, their, their model language, and giving us the potential flexibility down the road if need be.
I don't understand how running for office, if you're working, most people work from nine to five. And if you're campaigning, you campaign after five. That's the, that's obviously why your work activity, especially somebody who works for the town, what in the world could you be doing for the town that would conflict with running for Congress or running for sheriff unless you're a police officer?
I'm not agreeing with the that portion of policy at all. Like I said, I don't vote anywhere that would grant a leave of absence for, unless it's a private entity, but not a public entity like a municipality or state government. You, you make your choice. Either A, you want to run for office or B, you want a job.
Okay. So right now, we don't even have that, that language in our current policy. I'll kind of scroll up a little bit here. Our current policy basically says, with the scratched out part there, we could just leave it as it is, which it doesn't tell you, you either work for us or you quit and run for office. It just says, don't do it on town property on town time.
Yeah.
Well, there you go. On down and out. This is pretty clear. Dawson?
I was just reading.
Ready.
I had.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll move on. All right, next is service awards. So this replaces the longevity awards, which was discontinued starting July, or will be discontinued starting July 1, 2018, as adopted by the budget. Service awards would be issued every five years instead of longevity awards. And this is just having a policy that, that mirrors what was passed in the budget. Next is, so in the budget, we also, oh, any questions? I kind of ran past that real quick. Okay, on that one. Yeah, okay, we'll keep going. All right.
This is the change that we made, right?
Yeah, yeah. This is, this is just codifying it in the employee handbook. It's just like the next one is the Christmas bonus. So in the Christmas bonus, or in the budget, it was allocated that we would do a flat $100 Christmas stipend to all employees, full-time employees. And so we're removing that policy in total out of the handbook because the handbook has a different policy. And this allows council the flexibility to provide it or not provide it without having to go back and change the handbook every year depending on council's pleasure. So it just removes it out. Next sentence. Yes, Tanya, I see Tony back there.
You said on July 1, 2018, and January 1, when that service award.
Did I say July? I'm sorry. I meant January. I apologize. I wrote January in the memo. I just said July. My apologies. Okay, yeah.
This is funny because, so the next council decided they want to put it back in there. Yeah, we codified it.
Well, not necessarily because it, it's something that can be put in budget year to budget year.
Right.
And then.
Change handbook every year.
But, so that's why we're pulling it out. So you won't have to change the handbook every year. So it would be issued.
After those, after those.
Take it down. Yeah, yeah, sorry. We're taking it down. Okay, I'm going to skip this next one. I'm going to come to that last because that's going to have probably quite a few questions. So I'm going to keep going and then we'll come back to that one. All right, grievance procedure. So previously, we alluded to the grievance procedure in the handbook. We didn't actually have it in the handbook. It, it was referenced. And then it was a whole separate policy that stood apart from it. We just put it in there word for word, and that's all that we did there. Other minor changes, changes included a word or two to include some clarity, specific meaning, grammatical changes. There was some model language that our labor attorney suggested that we put in the harassment section that wasn't in there, that, that create a little bit more clarity as far as process, how to report. So we did that. And leave of absence language was added from the, the model employee handbook at the recommendation of the labor attorney. And that was just some generic language that you wanted to see in there that we didn't have previously. So I could review that language if we need to, but I just said, okay.
The only thing I want to go back to is this evaluation period thing.
Okay. Go ahead.
Again, go back to state policy and everything else that I'm aware of. Like me, I'm on probationary status now since I've changed positions. Anytime there's a step made, you're on that six-month probation. So I would think a rehire of a former employee still requires that probationary status. But to just say at manager's discretion leaves it open to anybody coming in the door that you may, not you, the manager, period, whoever sits in this chair has the ability. Steve is a new hire, and you're my friend. I'm going to waive probationary status for this person. I don't agree with leaving that. It's said to be subjected to one person's opinion. I think you either have it or you're done.
Okay.
Did you do it specific to rehire?
It was specific to rehire.
The way, the way, the way I just read it, and I'll go back and find it, it simply says at manager's discretion, whatever things I saw.
Let me get that.
And we've had this a number of times in the past few months. We've had an employee leave, go to another organization. That grass was not greener. And they decided that they wanted to come back to the town. And they would be one month or three months removed. And when they came back, we know the way that they work. We know the way that they perform.
You've terminated them. All employees, including former employees who have been rehired, are considered to be on probation for the first six months, comma, unless otherwise determined by the town manager. So that's saying all you employees, period.
I see that. I wasn't thinking.
I, I, I don't like that at all. I think you're on probation, period. Whether you go and come or not, that's your choice. But that's just, you've got the level of playing for them. Otherwise, it's subjected to whoever's sitting in that seat. Say, well, you've got to do it, but you don't.
And it does get employee who might always be looking for the wringer grass pause for thought is their probationary time to, to be as quick to, to go looking.
Okay, so the last thing, let me come up here. Okay, so the last thing that, the last recommendation by Mr. Strum, our labor attorney, was the removal of our affirmative action policy. And the reason why, and this is why I said for last, it would be a big section. The reason why is because we're not under a court order to implement one, and we're not federally mandated to have one. And he says that it opens the door to where it says here, this, I put his explanation in here. Unless you are under.
This is the email.
This is his email from, from Mr. Strum. I always want to say Strum, so I have to stop and think about how to say it. The second line here, unless you are under a court order or is, or somehow otherwise legally obliged by the federal government to have such a policy, its use is improper and can subject the town to liability if it gives preferences to anyone due to their race. Remember, Title VII is colorblind. As with all employers, you are obligated by law to make all employment decisions, not just hiring, without regard to anyone's race or color or any protective status. Only when a court imposes upon a public entity via a lawful issue or an obligation to take affirmative action in some respect, or if federal contracts or grants specifically require affirmative action as a condition of contract or grant, should any public entity publish and act on a policy to give anyone a preference in hiring or otherwise. You should seek applicants from all sectors of your town for employment and make choices based on who you believe is the best qualified for the job, regardless of skin color or other protective status, to do otherwise subject the town to liability. Given that, and the policy language, or the model MASC policy language also has a little disclaimer in there that says, unless you're under a federal mandate or court order, don't put this in here.
Well, the reason that we had affirmative action from the beginning was because these procedures of guidelines were not being followed in terms of fairness by employers. And that's why we initially got affirmative action programs implemented. And even though they're being turned back now, I don't see why we would need a court order or a federal law to, to implement an affirmative action policy.
So again, go ahead.
But if it's opening up the town to liability that we don't need.
See, we already have an EEO statement that says we're an equal opportunity employer.
Right.
So we, we hire anyone and everyone based on their qualification.
That's Title VII.
Title VII, right. So this is what the policy said prior. And it says, in support of our policy of providing equal opportunity employment to all persons, the town shall make, or excuse me, take affirmative action to ensure that an adequate number of qualified minorities are represented in the hiring and placements available. Opening, the town manager shall appoint a memorandum and equal employment opportunity affirmative action coordinator. The EEO slash AA coordinator shall be responsible for the administration and coordination of the EEO slash AA program. That's the language we had prior.
Did the attorney state what probably we had with this language in it?
That, that's what he wrote.
That's what that email was.
Do you want to read it?
He said that just having that opens you up to issues.
I mean, did he elaborate on that also?
Well, because if, if we're hiring based upon any protective status, and we don't hire someone because they're not the right protective status, we can be sued for that and held liable. So for example, a protective status would be gender. So if we say we want to hire 15 women this year, and all we have, and we have 14 women apply and a male apply, and we don't hire him, he could sue us for Title VII discrimination and vice versa. So I just picked, oh, sorry.
We are still an equal employment.
Yes.
Well, Title VII.
And, and that's.
It's our state then.
Right. So whether we, I mean, it's.
It's both titles.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a long plan.
He's just, he's simply saying if you, if you are hiring people based on protective status to, go back down. Shall take affirmative action to assure that an adequate number of qualified minorities are represented in the hiring and placement of, he's, basically, he's saying if you're defining that you need a particular race or you need a particular gender, and that's what you are going after, that we are open to liability and that that is illegal to do. He's saying being an equal employment opportunity organization is satisfactory enough that you will not discriminate on anyone because of that. But to have that written into this to say that you are going to ensure an adequate number of minorities or.
Target or preference.
To target or provide a preference opens you up for liability.
Not yet. What you've got is you've got two, two policies that are opposed. You've got one that's saying we are an equal opportunity employer. We treat everybody the same. You've got another one that says we give special status to this group. That, that's, that's what you're seeing.
Much better.
Any real advice to not take his recommendation in front of his labor attorney's side?
That's all the change.
And on, on the other hand, in that, and then you're opening yourself up to lawsuits again if Title VII is not followed.
Right, which you are an equal opportunity employer, so, and.
So, so it's.
Well, Title VII covers, no, Title VII covers it all.
Right.
So if you aren't being an equal opportunity employer, you are open to lawsuit under Title VII.
In other words, that's not necessary.
Right.
Unless it was federally mandated by a grant or a contract, or we were under court order, which I asked.
It conflicts with Title VII.
And court order is usually the result of a lawsuit. So that's what I'm saying, is both ways, you, you are subject to.
No, no, this is, Title VII covers us. We can't discriminate, period. So that right there is just something that shouldn't be in there. Because it talks about firm and maxing, where you give them the preference and quotas and praises.
And it's a, for, I'm not a lawyer nor an expert, but they've defined when.
You pass the ball with your little little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I tripped over.
Stayed it all day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
One other thing before we move on from there. During the budget process 2017, 18, we talked about the merit raises, and staff indicated that they were working on guidelines for.
Evaluations.
To, to implement. Have you all completed? I didn't see anything in here in reference to.
No, it, it's not been a part of our employee policy and procedures, our handbook. And before we started, I actually had that notion of like, I wonder if we should have it in here. And I was going to check the model to see if they have it in here, which I don't believe it does because theirs is a lot shorter than ours. And, but if that's something that council more to discuss, that are part of being, it's not my recommendation at this point. Ted and I haven't really had a chance to talk about it. But, but we are still actively working on the employee evaluation process because that's something that we'll be implementing in October.
So when do you anticipate having that complete?
Probably the next, Tanya, you think the next week or two? Because we, we kind of nailed down, we figured out which ones we like from the, the various ones that we received from different municipalities. from the various ones that we received from different municipalities and looking around and at different corporations to look at both inter, you know, peer-to-peer monitoring, self-review, as well as supervisor review, and looking at ways to incorporate all those into a very dynamic process.
I'd be very interested in seeing that once it's completed.
Okay. Next is executive session. Need a motion to go in the executive session, please. Receive legal advice. I hope that will tax withdrawal. So, that's any from you?
Second.
Second, great, and discussion. That's a little different one.
District one. District one, yes.
District three.
Yes.
Four.
District four, yes.
District seven. Come back in for the second session. Charles, third second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, the session. District one.
District one, yes.
District three.
Yes.
District four.
District four, yes.
District seven.
Yes.
And I move you to the session. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Charles.
Second.